Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 for the meeting number, and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. For this week's agenda, it will approve the minutes, the first item will be to approve the minutes of September 8, 2020. We have no A&amp;R requests. At 6:35, we have Jay Patel here to discuss the Village Gateway zoning and some changes he would like to make to that. Following that, we'll have the town plan update, and then old and new business. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of September 8? Is there any questions, comments, or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
No motion.
So moved, Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, and move, and Sue, is that a second? You want to second it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. We have a motion to second. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. So Jane, would you like to make any introduction on the request from Jay Patel?
Yes. So this evening you have with you Mr. Jay Patel. He is the owner of 21 New Boston Road, which is basically our Village Gateway District. A few years, I say a few years, Jay, I think it was around 2013 maybe, we worked with Mr. Patel to rezone a piece of property that was part commercial and part residential because he had a vision of a kind of mixed-use development for that corner. So the board worked with him at that time and developed our Village Gateway District zoning, which is chapter 27. So over the course of a few years now, Mr. Patel has built the Holiday Inn and also the additional building where Panera bred, and there's one additional vacant storefront there. The rear portion of this property was expected to contain a bank since the time that the application, Mr. Patel's site plan application was approved, he's indicated that he's tried without success to get a bank to be a tenant there, and he's also looked at other potential fast casual or offices, and his challenge has been trying to fit that in the space that's left in that rear corner. So Mr. Patel has with him this evening Mr. Mike Jacobs, he's his broker, and Mr. Pat Dougherty, who is his engineer. They would like to speak to the board this evening about kind of changes in market trends and what they're seeing and their, I guess, inability to obtain a tenant for that space, and to ask the board if they would be the petitioner for a proposed zoning change that would allow for fast food restaurants to be allowed in the Village Gateway District with all of the, excuse me, architectural standards would all remain, so any buildings constructed would be of the same architecture as the other two buildings there. So Mr. Patel came to Mr. Bridges and myself with the request, and we suggested that he would want to come and meet with the board to discuss this and see how the board felt about this proposal. So with that, we can turn it over to you, Mr. Patel, and also, Pat, we have your plan that you sent to the board. If you want us to put that up on the screen at any time, just let us know, and we can do that. Pat, we can't hear.
Hi, do you want to take?
Pat, we can't hear you.
Hi, Jacob, Mr. Jacob.
Pat, we still can't hear you. Sorry, Pat, we're not hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, that's good.
Okay. Thank you, Jane, you provided a great summary.
Pat, it's Pat, I'm sorry, could you turn off the microphone on your computer? We're getting double feedback here now.
Okay, I got my speaker off, my monitor now, is that better?
Okay, that's better, thank you.
So that was a great summary. Mr. Patel has developed, you know, I think, a beautiful center. Originally, the thought, along with the hotel, he had a bank interest that's in the site and that kind of drove the other uses, and originally that bank use was going to be in the location where Panera ended up. We re-revised the site plan when the bank lost interest, and Panera was very interested. And since that time, Mr. Jacobs has contacted like every bank that is in this region to see if they would locate here, and Mr. Jacobs could probably explain a little more on the marketing effort he's gone through. At the same time, you know, any of the allowed uses that are in this district have been marketed aggressively by Mr. Jacobs, had no success, maybe because this particular pad isn't very visible from Route 20, or the turning movements, or whatnot. They have received calls or some interest from fast food uses, but knowing that that was not an allowed use, that was not pursued, that was, you know, probably for the last several years. Our feeling is, is if the types of uses that are allowed in this district were expanded, then we would have success in finishing off this project. A fast food use in particular is allowed in two other commercial zoning districts in the town. It's allowed in the properties to the south of us, the property to the east and west of us. The difference would be in the Village Gateway District, as Ms. Bouvan said, there's some strict controls on the type of development, that you have to go through design review, materials, setbacks are all, to make it a less intense development. So our hope is that the planning board would accept our request and sponsor a little change that would, you know, increase the types of uses in this district. I did put together a concept plan showing how a fast food use would work in here, and Jane, if you could put that up, I can kind of run through, and this wouldn't be a final design, we would certainly have to work with planning and design review to get all the details down, but, you know, generally, this is a site plan that would work.
All right, Janay will put that up for you, Pat.
If you could zoom in to the top, top area of the plan.
Is that okay, Pat?
What you're seeing is the full, yeah, that's good. What you're seeing is the full development plan, so at the bottom left, that building is the hotel, and on the bottom right is Panera with the space that remains vacant. On the top right is where the bank was proposed, you can see that there's a large area there. We had originally proposed a bank with two curb cuts onto this driveway in the center, one closer to New Oxford Road, and one where this driveway shown. We wanted to provide a use such as a fast food restaurant, you'd need more queuing distance, so what we've done is we've made it with one driveway with a counterclockway circulation around the building, and that counterclockway circulation would be separate from parking, and it would be adequate number of parking spaces. Again, this is a concept level plan, just showing that, you know, what we're proposing would be able to be built, and we'd certainly need, you know, the reviews by, you know, planning board, design review, and conservation commission. So I think that this, you know, concept plan supports our request, and that is something that could be developed on the property if it were an allowed use. You know, that's a brief presentation, if you want me to go into any more details on the site, or if you'd like Jacobs to speak about the marketing effort that we've gone through, you know, we would certainly be glad to do that.
Okay, before we get to that, maybe we could see if any of the planning board members have any questions. Sue, from this point, do you have any question on what Pat presented?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Chris?
No, no questions.
Dane?
No.
Mike?
No questions, no.
Okay, Jeff?
No questions.
All right, thanks. Yeah, so if you want to move on with the marketing discussion, that'd be great.
Certainly. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, first thing, my firm is very well-connected to the retail sector, we spend all our time in that industry. We've been marketing this property aggressively since early 2017, to the banks and to the allowed uses as designed by Pat originally. What we learned from the banking industry collectively was that Sturbridge is considered overbanked, and we've spoken with just about every bank in the region and out of the region, and they all came back with the same feasibility results. There's enough banks in Sturbridge, there's not enough room for more deposits. So having learned that, we approached all the local banks to see if they would consider a relocation. We did have lengthy discussions with two of the local banks for many months, but ultimately they decided to stay where they were. As Pat had noted, one of the challenges of this second pad site is the lack of visibility. And for the people not in the industry that can't understand, we've been going through a period for the last few years where the retail and banking industry has a zero tolerance site selection policy, meaning if the location is not perfect, they will not do it. And those are some of the challenges we've had. We've had many ongoing discussions with several national and regional retailers, but we've been unable to nail down someone, an anchor for that pad site. I think one of, the challenge too, is that we have not pursued uses that were not allowed, but we are getting called unsolicitedly by fast food and smaller concepts within the retail sector, and that's one of the universal things that are going on right now. A lot of the restaurants and the smaller retailers are shrinking their concepts. So that's one of the challenges we face, whether it's fast casual, or any of the other types of uses, they weren't allowed specifically on that pad site. So that's one of the reasons that three of us got together and decided, hey, we need to address the market, see where it's going, and see if we can try to finalize this development.
Okay. I just have one question on that before we turn it over to the board members for questions, but if you constructed a fast casual in a small building, doesn't the current zoning allow that?
Now, Charlie, the minimum size is 4,000 square feet. That's in our definition of fast casual. Give me just a second to pull that up. An establishment that is at least 4,000 square feet in area, because that was my first thought as well, is, you know, maybe just a smaller fast casual, but our own definition, that was kind of how we differentiated between fast casual and fast food, a little bit on the service end of it, and then also on the square footage.
Okay. So when the actual zoning change, if the board does wish to move forward and sponsor this, we would have to then clarify that it would allow fast food plus casual, fast casual, as a lower square footage?
No, just, their request right now is just to add fast food, not to reduce the size on fast casual.
Oh, okay. I thought Michael just indicated that there might be an opportunity for a fast casual in a smaller venue.
Yes, so that's one of the challenges we face with the market now, is that most of the concepts are shrinking. So, you know, when we lived in real time five or six years ago, and when we were working with the zoning, 4,000 square feet was not uncommon. Now it's extremely uncommon. And a lot of the restaurants that formerly were not considering drive-throughs are now seeking drive-throughs. So now we're faced with a market that's changed to smaller concepts seeking drive-throughs. So that's really what the market will bear at this point, and that's who we want to go after.
Okay. So then it sounds to me that you're really looking for a change more than just adding, you know, fast food to the district. Is that correct, or?
Looked at that definition for fast casual, and the types of, I guess, what fast food that we're looking at, you know, kind of are in that gray area between fast food and fast casual, so I didn't specifically request that the definition of fast casual be changed. You know, we certainly, you know, if, you know, that would be acceptable as well, and I don't know if you'd have to re-advertise or, you know, take this up at a separate meeting, but, you know, we certainly would like the opportunities in the market to, you know, fast, true fast, enough square foot going with, say, a 2,500 square foot building. So, you know, I don't know if that would change our request, but we certainly would welcome that.
Jane, what do you think of that? I'm sorry.
Also, Charlie, you know, we try for fast casual. The second fast schedule after Panera is the Chick-fil-A, and they have no interest in Sturbridge. Mike can enhance, you know, more on that. So we are, you know, we can debate what is fast food, what is fast casual, but at the end of the day, if I don't have any user that meets the bylaws to put the building, we will have some, come back again and go through this process again. So I would rather have a liberty and have the freedom to advertise, and as you know, I put two beautiful buildings, the building will not compromise any, any design element that was required for the gateway. That I can promise. I leave my words. I would not have come back to you if I would have a success. We've been marketing and marketing, and we have absolutely zero interest, a zero interest on our pad site. Also, we have a second user next to Panera that was designed and built specifically for Five Guys. They have no interest, and Mike can explain more why they're not interested in our site, whereas they're now considering an old friendly site. So I am up against try to develop a gateway district. I'm shooting myself into the restrictions that was looks very normal, and we could have done a beautiful job if we would have a user. The Chick-fil-A showed up tomorrow morning, we would have a similar building as like a Panera, and then that would be the end of it. But we have nobody interested that kind of a use. Mike?
Yeah, so specifically to respond to the Five Guys thing, we've been dealing with them for probably over two years now, and part of the challenge has not been the town of Sturbridge, it's been the structure of Five Guys. The, it was a franchise owner that owned several units, he was really hot on Sturbridge, then decided against it, then he sold all his units. So then we've been dealing with the newest guy. Now, as in the last six months since the pandemic hit, Five Guys has decided that they want to own all their real estate, they don't want to lease. So they've completely shifted their criteria, which has changed a lot of their deals. Unfortunately, we're just a byproduct of all the changes that Five Guys has gone through. But beyond that, we've had several small restaurants that have expressed interest in similar fashion, but we want to be able to not only market the 2,400 square feet next to Panera, but also the ability, specifically because of the new interest in drive-throughs, to be able to shift someone that's seeking a drive-through over to that second pad site.
Okay. Jane, is there anything you'd like to add to that? In other words, it seems like they would like to have the opportunity to have fast casual or something that isn't quite fast food in the smaller square footage in that other pad site. Is that the case?
Well, I think so. You know, a restaurant, the other uses that are permitted in the district are restaurants, bakeries, delicatessens, and those shall not exceed 7,500 square feet. But the restaurant, under our definition, does not allow for the drive-through. So the, kind of the difference is we have three different food categories. One is the fast food, where you think about, you know, a lot of the people are coming through the drive-through, getting their food in paper bags and things, and there's no square footage maximum, or, excuse me, no square footage minimum on that. That is not currently allowed in the district. We have restaurants that are, you think of, you know, some of our restaurants that we have in town, maybe Cedar Street, The Duck, Avellino, your traditional kind of sit-down restaurants, and those are permitted. And then in this district, we have fast casual, which is defined as having at least 4,000 square feet in area and having a higher quality of food with less processed or frozen ingredients. And that was kind of the industry standard, actually, Mike, Pat, and myself kind of did a lot of research on definitions of restaurants at the time, and that really was the standard. So those are kind of our three differences. They're differentiated by square footage and by the ability to have a drive-through, and at least in our bylaws' opinion, the food has to be of higher quality in a fast casual or a regular restaurant, if that clarifies at all.
Well, in a way it does, but I guess my question just comes back to that. If somebody wanted to put in a 2,000 square foot fast casual, would they be able to do that with what we're changing here, would change for the fast food? We wouldn't, this wouldn't really affect the limit, right, on the 4,000?
No, it wouldn't. I think it's all, and how you define that particular type of food service that's going in there. So our, our definition...
Well, I'm sorry, Jane, I'm interrupting you.
That's okay, go ahead.
I think that our, I think we may want to add to our request, and I was trying to explain that before, so that the request would be to allow fast food in this district, and then perhaps to change the definition of fast casual to some lower square footage number. So we would have two, two different changes to the bylaw. One would be the Village Gateway adding a fast food to the section on allowed uses, and then separately, a request to change the definition of the fast casual in the definition set in the bylaw.
To the 2,500 square feet, Pat?
I think the 2,500 square feet would work. Mike, would you agree with that?
We are getting a lot of inquiries for like 2,000 square feet. I'm not quite sure how much we want to be cutting edge here. The challenge is, Pat, as you know, that we are getting, you know, most of the guys are coming back with smaller concepts, whether it's, whether it's drive-through or not drive-through, everybody's shrinking it. So 2,500 square feet, you know, we could be having this discussion in a year from now, but 2,500 is now obsolete, because everything's smaller. So that's my one concern.
Yeah, if I may, it seems to me that, you know, we ought to address all these, you know, issues, if we are going to, you know, request a change in the zoning bylaws, so that we do give them the flexibility they need to have something that will fit into that Village Gateway District. I think as Jay pointed out, the important thing is the architectural, you know, requirements and features, and the fact that, you know, we would have another building that, you know, fits the nice features that they have now. And so I think if they need that flexibility to be able to have either a fast food or a smaller restaurant, or a smaller, you know, fast casual, then we ought to try to, I think, you know, draft the bylaw change to allow that, I would hope, I would think. Okay. So do you have anything else to present on this, or? If not, I'll ask the board for their questions and comments, and see if they're interested in, you know, pursuing this with Mr. Patel. Sue, what are your thoughts?
Yes, I'm very interested in pursuing this with Mr. Patel. And as you stated earlier, I think we need to be sensitive to the needs of the times. And to change our definition for the fast food and fast casual in our zoning, as well as the drive-through window, is an important aspect of these changes that we're viewing today. So I support the change in the definition and the addition of the drive-through.
Great. Chris?
I don't have any questions or comments, but I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing on our end to make the change.
Okay, great. Jane?
Yes, I agree. I definitely have seen that trend in the industry and think the changes that you added, Charlie, to make this more comprehensive would be for the best. A quick comment, so, I know that this is a concept plan, and I'm not looking at it for a site plan level type stuff, but over in the zoning table, the side yard setback provided, looks like it wasn't updated, proposed is located on a bunch of buildings that are existing. And I think this layout, though I understand what you're doing to try to maximize what could be done, looking at a 2,000 square foot restaurant only requires about 20 parking spaces, you're showing about 40, you could definitely bring that in easily by losing those... in, you know, pursuing this with Mr. Patel. Sue, what are your thoughts?
Yes, I'm very interested in pursuing this with Mr. Patel. And as you stated earlier, I think we need to be sensitive to the needs of the times. And to change our definition for the fast food and fast casual in our zoning, as well as the drive-through window, is an important aspect of these changes that we're viewing today. So I support the change in the definition and the addition of the drive-through.
Great. Chris?
I don't have any questions or comments, but I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing on our end to make the change.
Okay, great. Dane?
Yes, I agree. I definitely have seen that trend in the industry, and think the changes that you added, Charlie, to make this more comprehensive would be for the best. I have a couple of quick comments. So I know that this is a concept plan, and I'm not looking at it for a site plan level type stuff. But over in the zoning table, the side yard setback provided, looks like it wasn't updated. Proposed is located on a bunch of buildings that are existing. And I think this layout, though I understand what you're doing to try to maximize what could be done, looking at a 2,000 square foot restaurant only requires about 20 parking spaces, you're showing about 40. You could definitely bring that in easily by losing those exterior parking spaces and pulling this whole thing another 50 feet back away from that burlap pool. I wasn't here for the impervious part of it before, but I'll leave that for site plan. I was at this site earlier today at Panera getting lunch, and I agree that with the architecture and design review changes, I don't have any concerns with the use plan changes. This development looks very well-built. I'm looking forward to seeing it finished. But when I was exiting the site looking left, I couldn't see anywhere up New Boston Road, and that whole vegetation strip needs to be cleaned up. But I am in support of the zoning change.
Great, very good. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, it was interesting, Dane, that you just brought that up, because I actually ran into that same issue, taking a left out of the facility as well. But back to the subject here, yeah, I'm definitely supportive, and I want to make sure that we change the zoning to be reflective of what's happening. I mean, the food service industry is probably going through the most change right now, and smaller is definitely what everyone is looking for. I know that for a fact. And people are looking for convenience, whether it's pickup or drive-through. So I think this change is needed. I want to make sure we set it up so that it's relevant for the future years as well.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
I'm in support as well.
Okay. Jane, it seems like, you know, the board is pretty much in support. What would you suggest we do as far as any motions at this point, or maybe a timeline for getting the details of what the zoning change would be?
So at this point, I think that I would like to see the planning board vote to be the petitioner for the changes. And the changes right now, as I see them proposed, would be twofold, would be to add fast food to Section 27.04, Subparagraph B, Item Number 7, which would be fast food by special permit. So that would be right under fast casual with drive-through. And then secondly, to change the definition of fast casual restaurant to say that it's an establishment that is at least 2,000 square feet in area. So those are, what I'm hearing is the two changes Mr. Patel is seeking. And if the board would vote to be the petitioner on those changes, I can draft that up, get it back to you at the next meeting, so you can review the changes in writing. And then if the board is satisfied with that, we'll send it to the Board of Selectmen to start the public hearing process. But I would hold off a little bit until we know when a town meeting might be coming, because our public hearing, in your recommendation, is only valid for a six-month period. So I'd like to be ready for whenever a town meeting might come. So maybe we'll just keep an eye, and maybe, you know, November, hold the public hearing. That would give us, you know, a six-month window from November to hopefully there'll be a town meeting. I think a lot of it depends on COVID and being able to have a town meeting. I think that's going to be an issue the town is going to struggle with.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you, Jane. Jay, does that seem to be reasonable to you and your people?
I think so. What do you think, Mike?
Yes, I do. I think if the town's in support, that allows us to open up our, you know, our marketing. Yep, absolutely.
Charlie, this is Mike. Would we be able to get some data on what the right size for fast casual should be? I mean, when I do some research, I'm seeing averages as low as like 1,200 square feet. Would it be possible to like at least make that data-driven decision?
Yeah, I would think we might be able to get more data. Mike Jacobs, is that something that you could provide, or?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think we can put that together collectively, Charlie. Yep.
Charlie?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Sue?
There's a couple things. One is, when Jane mentioned the motion, she didn't put in the drive-through window. And the second is, can't we be flexible in our definition since Mike did mention in his research what he found from 1,000 to 2,000 square feet and leave it an open number so that it's marketable to more establishment?
What are your thoughts on that?
I'll answer the drive-through questions. Sue, we don't need that, because fast food is allowed to have a drive-through restaurant. So just by allowing fast food, they would be able to have the drive-through, provided it meets the criteria in Chapter 21. And then on the square footage, I think if Mike's going to give us some research, maybe we could take that up again at the next meeting. We still have a little bit of time to figure out the most appropriate.
But also get the casual fast. We need to be able to put a drive-through on that definition as well, correct?
On fast casual? Yes, it's already in the bylaw in the Village Gateway District to allow fast casual with drive-through. So the only thing we're talking about is the square footage right now.
Right. If Jane, when, you know, we were going back and forth when the fast casual definition was created, I recall that 4,000 square foot number, you know, we were using to differentiate from fast food, one more differentiation. So, you know, if we were to allow fast food, excuse me, I'm not sure that that square footage number, you know, really matters at this point. And maybe we just change the definition, remove the reference to the square footage.
And concentrate more on the type of restaurant? Could you, and maybe for the next meeting, could you maybe, or maybe this question for Mike, maybe give examples of, you know, what would you consider fast casual versus what would you consider fast food if the square footage was eliminated?
Yeah, that's easy enough, and that's a lot more open. It allows us more latitude. So certainly, yep.
I think, Charlie, do you want to put this back on the agenda for the next meeting when we get some additional data?
We could do that. I mean, it sounds to me like, you know, the board is very supportive of the idea of moving forward and sponsoring this. I think it's just a question of making sure, you know, we know what's actually going to be in the wording of what change we'd like to make. So if it doesn't delay anything to do that next time, we can do that. Otherwise, we can get a motion to move it forward now if you'd like. But I do think we need to get, you know, the final idea on what we would like to have the actual wording, to be as flexible as reasonably possible.
Actually, we have six months to finalize those numbers on whatever the small changes we're talking about.
Right. I think we have time to, you know, take our time and, you know, allow Mike and Pat to do some research and maybe get together with me in the interim, and we can see if we can put together some changes for the next meeting, which is October 13.
Okay, I think it's reasonable then to take it up then and have, you know, more defined definitions.
Mike and Pat, does that date work for you?
It does.
That works for them?
Yep.
All right. So if the board is fine with that, I'll work with Mike and Pat and Mr. Patel over the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a draft proposal for the board to consider at the October 13 meeting. And then if you want any changes to the language, we can make sure that we refine that before the board decides to be the petitioner. Would make sense.
I think that's very good. Thank you.
Well, we're just going to see if there's anyone on the call-in line, any interested parties, Charlie.
Is there anyone from the public who has any comments or questions?
There's no one on the line.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time and support. I appreciate it.
Very good.
We appreciate your contribution. Thank you.
All right. Jane, would you like to go forward with your con planner update?
Sure. So as I mentioned, the next meeting is October 13. So we'll work on the codification, finalizing the changes on accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and I've rewritten some of the sections on stormwater with the DPW to make them consistent. So we'll have those back to you for the 13th. Our deadline actually is the 16th, so it'll be right before. We have to get that back to general code, but I'll get that to you. And then we'll also discuss this zoning issue again. And then on October 27, we'll have the Housing Partnership and Central Mass Regional Planning Commission presenting the housing plan that they just finalized today. And then the MVP grant, this is a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, and there will be three virtual workshops that will be bringing together different people in the community with at least one, excuse me, with one person from each of our land use boards. And so the purposes of the workshops are to define extreme weather and climate-related hazards, identify current and future vulnerabilities and strengths, and develop and prioritize actions. So we have asked the chairs of these various boards and committees to participate. And it's expected the workshops will be held on Wednesday evenings on October 7, 14, and 28. And actually, it will be from 6 to 8. I had 6 to 9. So we'd like to ask Mr. Blanchard to, excuse me, Mr. Blanchard to participate on those meetings. And if he is unable to, if somebody would be able to fill in in his absence. Charlie, those dates are good with you?
Yeah, I should be available all three dates. Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right. And as you know, we received the Green Communities Grant in the amount of $176,917. And that is allowing us to complete weatherization projects at the library and Burgess Elementary School, and install the first phase of new lighting at Burgess Elementary School. And the Town Facilities Coordinator and School Facilities Manager are attending building operator certification. And then we've also been able to fund the difference between a regular and a hybrid cruiser, and also purchase two idle write devices for the police department. And as I mentioned earlier, the housing plan is complete, so we'd like to present that to the planning board on October 27. And that is all I have.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old and new business, and maybe I'll take them together. So if you have either old or new, you can let us know. Sue, any old or new business?
No old or new business.
Very good. Thank you. Chris?
No, 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 no old business.
All right, great. Dane?
No.
Very good. Mike?
None.
Okay, Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, great. I guess the next thing is just to have a motion to adjourn then.
Okay, but can I ask Jane a question, Charlie?
Sure.
Jane, with this housing plan, I know it's a month off, we're going to meet again concerning it. But I'm wondering, was, is this the housing plan for the manufactured homes?
No, this is, this is the town's housing plan. So our last one was prepared in 2009, and it analyzes housing need in the community and outlines a series of goals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Good. Motion to adjourn?
No motion. Sue?
Sue, great. A second? Second on the motion to adjourn.
Chris? Second.
Great. All in favor, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.